I would like to welcome you all to our candidates' forum this evening. We have the four candidates here. I will give them just a couple of minutes to give a brief introduction before I start with the questions. Mr. Reader, could we start with you?
My name is Kenneth Reader. I'm a lifelong citizen of St. Joseph, Missouri, 1973 graduate of Lafayette. That's about all you have to say right now, but, uh, no, so.
Mr. Mason?
Hi, I'm David Mason. I'm mostly a lifelong resident of St. Joseph. I was on the farm for a few years before coming here in eighth grade. I had five years as a student, graduated from Central High School, two degrees afterwards, including a master's, and four lifetime certificates, 30 years of teaching in St. Joseph in a school for delinquents and also in the middle school, and six years during that time of also researching board policies and looking at some of the problems.
First of all, I'd like to say thank you to the PTA for having the forum for us tonight, and thank you for all that you do in our schools because I know that your association, your organization in our schools is a blessing to our kids and to our staff, so thank you. Yes, my name is Tammy Pasley, and I am running for reelection to the Board of Education of the St. Joseph School District because I am just not ready to walk away. Three years ago, when I came onto the board, I saw a district in desperate need of new direction, and I saw that district's faculty and student population in desperate need of a voice, and I think for the last three years, my record would show that I've worked alongside other board members to bring that new direction to our district and to be that voice for the student and to be that voice for the teacher in the classroom. And so, again, I'm just not ready to walk away.
Dr. Green?
Hi, my name is Brian, and I would like to echo Tammy in just thanking you for everything that you do. I think the PTA is vital, serves a vital mission here in St. Joseph in support of our schools, support of our teachers, and, most importantly, support of our students. I would like to thank you as well for the opportunity, the last three years, to serve on the Board of Education. It has been a wild ride. It's been a ride that I've learned a lot. I look forward to continuing to serve the community in an area that I think in the community that is our most vital link, and that is our public schools. If we're going to rebuild our community, if we're going to reshape our community, if we're going to affect the poverty rate in this community, our public schools are vital. Right now, it is an issue that everyone in the community is concerned about and putting effort into, and we need, I feel we need stability on this board. When I ran three years ago, I had just moved back to the community, grew up here, was, had an incredible experience in our public schools. It was a piece of my youth that it made me really enjoy growing up in St. Joe. When I moved back, I had all that, that same exuberance that I had as a child, and then when we went through the struggles that we did, it hit very hard. I hated seeing it. I look forward to our community experiencing that pride again in our schools. I think it's going to happen. It's going to take a little while, it's going to take a few steps, but I look forward to seeing it again.
Okay, I will be asking you questions. Each of you will have a three-minute time limit. If you use the three minutes, great. If you don't, that's fine, we'll move ahead to the next candidate. Mr. Reader, we'll start with you. Are you a current member of a local PTA unit? And if you are, how have you personally advocated for our students through PTA?
I'm not a current member of the PTA, even though I do have a granddaughter that is a freshman at Central, so maybe I would consider joining your organization.
Okay. Mr. Mason?
I too want to thank the PTA for this opportunity. I am not a current member. I was a PTA president in Neely School when my children were there, and I was certainly involved at PTA at Spring Garden, so I know the, and support what you do. I'm glad to be here for that reason.
Thank you, thank you. Tammy?
Yes, I currently am a PTA member at Hyde Elementary School, and previous to this year was a member both at Humboldt and Lindbergh Schools, supporting the PTA in their efforts to fundraise for the schools, so spend a lot of money when my grandkids bring home their major saver cards and that, and just try to assist any way I can.
Okay.
And I don't, I don't think I am a member of the PTA. I think if the, if the question is geared towards what kind of efforts are you making towards maybe your local school, I would say my wife and I have made quite a few efforts in those areas. Edison, we're very proud of the walking school bus that Edison is doing. It's geared primarily towards increasing attendance of some of our students that may have been dependent upon some means that they didn't have. That walking school bus has increased attendance on a lot of the kids that are closest to the schools, so there's also some efforts they're doing with chairs in these schools that we've helped donate towards, so we're proud of, we're proud of our local school and look forward to more opportunities to serve there.
Okay, excellent. Are you guys okay if I use a first-name basis?
Please.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, I didn't ask that to begin with. David, as you all know, there are currently many bills being proposed regarding vouchers and charter schools. What are your thoughts on vouchers and charter schools?
I'm glad that you brought that up. After the voters pass this levy, we must go after increased state funding. Now, diverting funding, either through a tax reduction, as they are trying to do, or through charter schools or other tax schemes, divert school money that should be in the public schools. It's bad enough that we've dropped to less than the 25% that the state constitution requires, and I can go to the place that that's from in the constitution as well. Because of the low funding, we place fourth in local funding and 27th in state funding. I'm sorry, 47th in state funding among all the states in the United States, so that's backwards. The support for schools should not be on the backs of just the local people, and to give you an example, the half percent state tax reduction would only amount to $100 or $200 for most people. Now, if you have $10 million of income, then it's about $50,000. So, most people are not going to be really too excited about getting that little bit of a refund. It'll help, but it needs to go to public schools. We're talking about, just to fund inflation each year, is about $2 million that needs to come in extra from the state to this district. Then, if you take the backlog or the fact that they're underpaying, there's $3 million or more coming, that need to come in there. Federal's behind too. So, we need to have all of you writing to the state legislature right now, and then after the levy passes, we have to have a community-wide effort to go after the money, and that's one of the reasons I'm running and what I want to lead this community to do.
Thank you. Tammy?
This will be my 26th straight year in a row going down to the General Assembly and advocating for public education, and I am definitely against vouchers in any form. They can call them education, educational scholarships, empowerment scholarship accounts, whatever they want to call them. It's taking public money away from public schools, and it shouldn't happen. I also do not agree with charter schools, and I'll talk about that in just a moment, but just today, a critical alert went out to all educators across the state or anyone involved in public education. Senate Bill 160 and House Bill 478 are the empowerment scholarship accounts, so we need to get a hold of our legislators, legislators, excuse me, as early as tonight, if not tomorrow, to encourage them to vote no on that voucher bill. And then also, Senate Bill 292 and House Bill 581 went out on charter school expansion. You just have to look to the state of Arizona to realize that charter schools don't work. They've just about corrupted the education system in Arizona. We do have, in the state of Missouri, I want to say three, don't hold me on that, but I believe there are three charter schools who have been successful. Now, there have been many, many that have been started through the years, but three that are successful, and they find success in the metropolitan areas around St. Louis and Kansas City. What the charter school expansion will do is allow charter schools to come up into northwest Missouri, which will not be good for our small school districts, and they won't come, or in this bill that's being proposed, they won't be ruled under the local school district, which then causes a lot of trouble, and so, most definitely, no vouchers, no charter schools, period.
Okay. Brian?
Yeah, I think there's a similar theme here. I'm against it as well. I believe our public schools are strongest when everyone is participating and when everyone is involved. I, when, when groups of people tend to go away from, say, our public schools, and then funds go with it, all it does is it tends to weaken the public school system that's left. I believe, you know, it is my personal feeling that this is a result of different groups of people wanting to create a better system. I understand the feeling, but what I would rather do is for them to involve themselves in the system and make it a better system. Anytime you take funds away, vital funds away from our public education system, it's going to weaken it. It's just plain and simple, and it hurts the most vulnerable in our community.
Okay, thank you. Kenneth?
Certainly.
As you all know, there are currently many bills being proposed regarding vouchers and charter schools. What are your thoughts on vouchers and charter schools?
At least we wouldn't be the first, or we wouldn't have to reinvent the wheel when it came to that, but I'm not sure where they have worked and where they failed the most. I've heard that before, that in the larger metropolitan areas, they have merit and have worked to some degree. I know as the culture here generally, especially in St. Joe, looks forward making it so that when people get out of high school, it's looking down the road at a trade and things like that, so my understanding that if we'd expand the Hilliard complex by tenfold, for example, because, you know, the predictions are that in less than 20 years, a plumber, a carpenter, and an air-condition man is going to make twice as much as a computer programmer of any kind. So, in those instances where vouchers and/or a charter school setup would apply to that in a beneficial way, I think we as a community ought to look at it at that point in time. But this is something kind of out of our control, not in our wheelhouse, because it's a state issue, obviously, and I think a large part of our board and our people should be concentrating on righting our ship. You don't turn this ship around in a fast manner. It takes years. I agree with some sense about Ms. Pasley mentioning that she was advocating the continuity of continuing to be on the board, but by the same token, by putting new voices or new ideas or new thoughts forward, also is not a bad situation to have.
Thank you. Looking to the future, what do you see as the top three areas that need to be addressed to ensure future success for the school district and the community? Tammy?
Number one is an operations levy to pass in this community, and we have an opportunity on April 2nd to pass a 61-cent levy that's not going to fix everything, but is definitely going to get us on the right track, allow us for the next five years to open our school doors and to move forward with operations, so that then, number two, we can look at a long-range facilities plan, which we are in the process of doing, because one, there's got to come a time when we have to decide, what do we want school to look like in the St. Joseph School District? And that includes buildings, that includes curriculum, that includes makeup of school buildings, and so I think, you know, first of all, passing an operations levy, second of all, a long-range planning for facilities and curriculum as to what does 21st century learning look like in St. Joseph? What do we want it to look like? And then I think the third thing is behavior. Behavior is becoming a huge issue in our schools, and, you know, I started teaching 30 years ago, and behavior was a problem then, but we're facing, faced with a new type of behavior in today's society. It's a societal thing, and so one of the things that I really want to be actively involved in, and I know there are things in place now, our administration right now is working towards looking at new things that we can do, programs and things, hiring two school psychologists that we can bring in to help us better handle our kids with behavior, but that will be the mountain that I will die on, if there is one, for the next three years, because something has to be done in our schools about behavior, so.
Thank you. Brian?
You know, there's, running for the board again, you really, I often think about, okay, so where do we need to go now that we've balanced our budget? It's tough to, it's tough to go in any direction until we get this operations levy passed. That is, that is the hurdle that this district has to go, has to be able to get over, so I completely agree with you there. We've been in a state of just cutting, and we cannot move forward until we get this passed, so that has to be number one, and it's tough to, it's tough to name anything until that gets done. I would love to see our board, for the, as many years I've been on the board and maybe even before that, we have been focused on the business operations, and I think we've made some, I think we've made huge strides there, but I would love to see the board get more focused on our mission of students in the classroom. We might even need to, I want to, maybe this could be considered slaying a sacred cow, we might even need to redefine our mission, rebrand our mission, but we need to get our focus back on the student in the classroom, the teacher, that relationship between the student and the teacher. I think if the board could, could refocus ourselves and put our energy into that, I think we would see vast improvements in student success and just begin to look at that again. We started that with, with attendance, and we've seen great success with that. We see our scores lagging in English and math. I mean, those are the building blocks to everything else. That is, that is an area that I would really like to see the board move towards. I think we're starting to make steps, but again, it's hard to get there until this operations levy passes. Then finally, if I was to name just three categories, our buildings need attention desperately. Our buildings say a lot about us as a community. Some of them are grand, some of them are broken down, and, but more importantly, they're not meeting our needs, and, and that is something that, that we will be moving forward on in the next year, assuming we can get this operations levy passed, really kind of addressing our buildings and, and what are, where are our greatest needs. Personally, I think we need to take a strong look at our high schools. I think financially, that is where we can gain more efficiency, and in terms of moving this community together as one, addressing our high schools would be, I think, at the top of the priority list.
Thank you. Kenneth?
Yes, may I have a question?
Certainly. Looking to the future, what do you see as the top three areas that need to be addressed to ensure future success for the school district and the community?
Okay. The big thing that affects everything that we don't address in this community, where you're in a unique situation that way, of the 500 and some school districts in the state, only the ones that are in major metropolitan areas and the downtown areas are the ones that are losing population, and so we lack this growth, even just normal population growth within America, within the state, whatever. We have been in a really, when I went to high school, there were 17,500 students in our system, and then from there, for about 20 years, it declined to where we went to around 12,000 students, where we're, I think we're 11.5 now or something, so we declined. It took about 20 years to get down to that, and then we've been stagnant at that, that number for like over 20 years now. So, that's what affects our facilities too, is that, you know, we were a district way bigger. We were a town that was way bigger, so we're living with all these old buildings. Now, I don't agree with raising all the old buildings, and I, I have a different reaction when I have people come from way away or have never visited St. Joe, only drive around, they're kind of slightly on the other side of being impressed with these old buildings. Every place else in the world, they change, they save these old buildings that were built to last 150 years like they're going to last or had to last. So, because of this growth we don't have within this system for so many years, that is what's affecting us so severely in a negative way out here in, with our facilities. So, back to where some of the things I just spoke about, saying, yeah, we'd get, this operation thing, we need to get that off the table first, because I totally agree. I wish the board was totally concentrated on academics to make us the best academically in this area, and my three proposals for that have been, put those out, whatever that I want, and I've said this before, but I wanted to be able to put on I-29 highway a big billboard saying, highest-paid teachers in the state of Missouri, St. Joseph School District, and my goal would be to get us in at least in the top 90 percentile, because right now, we're in the bottom 25 percentile. But if we put that sign out there, and every position has 10 people waiting in line for it, every coach, every math teacher, every science teacher, because they know when they're coming to St. Joe, they're going to get the compensation, guess what we get? We get the best. We get to demand the best because of that. We get to demand the very best when we're paying them the best, and they all know it, there's 10 people waiting for their jobs.
Thank you.
That's one of the three, I'll get to touch on the last two here before we're done.
Okay, thank you. The role of the Board of Education is to hire-
Can I answer that question?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, my apologies.
That's all right. I just wanted to-
The timer threw me off, I guess, so, yes.
We don't like to be out early, when we-
No, 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 I'm in no rush at all, my apologies.
So, I've already talked about funding, and I'd like to see if all of the candidates here would pledge to go after the state and federal funding after the levy passes. Some other issues that I am concerned about, I am certainly concerned about school safety, and I'm glad that that's part of the new levy increase, and, and we should make clear that this levy is not so much new, but it's a replacement for the levy that went off a couple of years ago or whatever, four years ago, and it also just makes up for the Prop C rollback, which takes our taxes and rolls them back if we have so much of something, I don't even know how it's figured, but that's not important. It puts us in a worse financial position because we're fighting all of these different forces that want the lower taxes, and I agree, I like the lowest taxes I possibly can have, and one of the board's responsibilities is to put out education at the lowest possible cost, but we're a, mostly a people employer, and so because of that, we also need to attract people, and I'm very competitive, and I would like to pay the couple thousand more for new teachers that Park Hill does, just kind of like what you were saying. We, I'd like that billboard, that's, that's a nice idea. Another point of school safety, and you were talking about behavior in this, in the schools, a number of schools have put together a positive environment. Now, I wrote my thesis on positive peer culture, and you can actually involve the students in keeping the atmosphere, obeying the rules and doing the right things, if you have the right motivational approach to it, and sometimes if you don't, by just making them responsible. So, the people who might be standing around watching a bully bully somebody aren't standing around, or they're jumping to the defense of the person who is being bullied. We have to stop bullying in the schools. Well, there's more, but-
Thank you, and again, my apologies.
No, it's fine.
The role of the Board of Education is to hire and/or fire the superintendent, set policy, and approve a budget. Do board members and the board have a role in the day-to-day operation of the district? Brian?
Boy, we sure tried to. You know, no, I mean, I think you're, I think what you just stated in terms of hiring the superintendent, setting policy and the budget, that is the role in the day-to-day. So, you know, obviously, the, who you have as superintendent means everything for a school district. We've seen that, both negative, and I think we're seeing it now positive. The budget obviously has every, you know, it affects everything with the day-to-day policy, so those are the ways that we affect the day-to-day. What we, what we do with, I'll add further, what we do with our board agenda sets the direction of the district, sets priorities, so, so that is how the board should operate in a governing fashion. When the board starts getting involved in the day-to-day, it creates a mess.
Thank you. Tammy?
Yes, I do believe that it is our job as a board to hire, fire the superintendent, to set board policy, and to construct a budget that best works for our school district with our state, federal, and local funds. You know, three years ago, when I first came onto this board, we were all jumping in the weeds. Everybody was trying to save this district. I mean, I don't even want to remember those days, but yet they were only three years ago, and it was like all, everybody in, and it was mass chaos, and, you know, the, no one knew what the other was doing, and oftentimes we, but, you know, somebody had to do something, and somebody had to save the school district, and we all, I think, felt compelled that we were going to do that individually, but as Brian said, it's a difference in leadership, and one thing the board has really strived to do since we brought in our new superintendent, Dr. Van Zyle, is to allow him to be the superintendent, and then we just govern as the board. And, you know, earlier I made a statement that said, or where I said that behavior was that mountain, because it is a mountain, it's not a hill, it's a mountain, that I would die on if I needed to, and so, but there are ways as a board member that you can influence what happens day-to-day without being in the weeds and thinking that we as a board are going to run the school district, because that is not our place. We have a very capable superintendent in Dr. Van Zyle, and he proves that over and over again every day. We have very capable finance director in Dr. Gabe Eggers, we have Dr. Kraus as our human resource director, we have Dr. Williams as our academic superintendent, and, you know, we have great people in place now to run the school district, and so we need to govern, and we might need to let the administration run the school district.
Thank you. David?
I like many things that I see happening. I've looked at policies, I've looked at, I've attended a board meeting or two, and what I'm hearing, and I listen very closely, I like some of the things I'm seeing. I reserve judgment about people, and I'm always a little skeptical-
I reserve judgment about people, and I'm always a little skeptical. So, that's, that's actually a good strength to have, is to always be open to more information. And I believe that information needs to come from the community, the parents, the children, and I want to set up ways, sometime, I like surveys a lot, to find out what people are thinking and feeling, and not just make assumptions that everybody's like me, which they aren't. One of the things that got the Board in trouble for years and years and years, and more than what has even been totally discovered, is that they forgot their role of oversight. So, that's not, that's not getting involved in the day-to-day running, but it is asking deep questions and looking at the data, and listening to staff, and anybody else who wants to contribute and ask a question, both in meetings and privately as they come to, as the constituents come to us. And I've, you know, I've heard things already in the campaign, such as the concern for bullying, it's concern for nutrition, those come up right to the top of my mind. So, those are some things that people are interested in, and also that they're not too sure about the current Board, and they may want to make some change. So, they're listening, and they're thinking, and they're trying to decide which of us ought to go on.
Thank you. Kenneth?
I think the first thing, as far as a Board member that I would do, and I've done this to such a degree, I think it's probably got me to the situation of that, but the first thing I would do is listen to absolutely everyone in the room, from the custodians to the dang bus driver, to the kindergarten teacher, to the citizens walking down the street paying the taxes. First thing I would do as a Board member, or how I would be available is to, just a big set of years, initially, I think that's probably a good way to go, because you have to learn a lot from the Board members that already have the experience on there. But we discussed the superintendent, and I've had the privilege or whatever to speak with Dr. Van Zyl several times, and even had this discussion with Seth Wright several times, that you guys are doing it wrong by making Mr. Van Zyl be the politician, being the guy out here selling this levy. Let him run the school district. Let him run the school district. The Board is the one who spends the taxes, the Board is the one who needs to be on front of it. I've had that discussion with Dr. Van Zyl. I said, "I don't think you should be, I mean, you should stand right here behind the Board members at all these meetings and going, 'Yes, yes, yes,' but you shouldn't be the face on this, because if it fails, then his face is stuck with it." We brought him here to run the district. The Board members are responsible for spending the money, they should be asking for the money, straight and simple. There should be the faces on the front of all of it. And the, yeah, so the superintendent should run the district, and shouldn't be involved in the politics, and Board member, I think a good Board member is going to be somebody who listens. Because I've done that for a long time. I'm a St. John's citizen. I've escaped many times, college, and worked with the bank for 20 years, and traveled and lived around with them, but my mom was a school teacher. What can be a great experience about the school district? As, I was a substitute for the St. John's School District three times in my life over a 40-year span. The last time I worked for them, I was their most used sub, because I was a male teacher, I'd go anywhere. At that time, we could even go to the boys' home. But I tell you what, there's the best education in the world. That keeps you street smart. I suggestively pack in a couple other campaigns, and I think every new Board member under somewhat no pretenses, go in and substitute for one day in some class somewhere. Go handle an ISS class for half a day, if you really want to figure out, you know, how to help the most.
Sure.
Use the three minutes.
How would you handle-
I don't know, this might be a penalty point at the end.
How would you handle the requests if approached by an individual or a special interest group? Ken, we'll start with you.
Okay, excuse me then.
How would you handle the request if approached by an individual or a special interest group?
How would I handle it?
How would you handle it?
With both ears first, so you're going to listen. I'm sure they're going to have a viewpoint that's slanted one way or the other, but then from that point, collect that information, and I don't think there's many people in this community that doesn't think I wouldn't run the ball or stand against the flow on something, that a legitimate group brings something, even not a legitimate group brings something, I'm going to listen to them, and then I'm going to go find somebody who's the exact opposite opinion. Because by that time, I will know if I've listened to them, what is their concern? Do they have proof? Is it real? Is it imaginary? Is this something over here? Does it have long-term ramifications, one way or the other? I mean, is it legitimate? I mean, nowadays, we're still kind of learning this, at least almost 10 years ago now, it's hard to believe, but, you know, it was vicious there to be in the system. It was vicious, to be on the Board, to work for the district, to be in administration, and so. Pass.
David?
This actually happened to me this weekend. I have my Facebook page, it's just David Mason's Facebook page, it's the one that's connected with the school district, because I taught for so many years, that's how you find me. And then I have to put on that Facebook page the requirements from the Missouri Ethics Commission, because while they don't have a policy yet, they thought it would be a good idea to go ahead and show that I was a candidate and so forth. But anyway, this group contacted me, or a person from the group, and asked me my opinion about setting up a student group, and I said, "Well, I'm opening to listening to that issue or that concern," and I would look at the policy and see what's possible. I wasn't sure that an outside group could bring in a group into the schools. And so, today I looked up the policy, and I sent them a link to the URL for the district, and if that doesn't work, I also sent them the way to get to the policy, so they can read it for themselves and see how to go about, or how to advise students if they have any, that they could set up their own group. Basically, students can have a group as long as it's not secret, and a teacher may need to oversee the group, but not in any way participate, except to keep order and make sure the room is cleaned up at the end of the time period. So, that's basically what the policy says. Interesting experience. I'm willing to listen, and then I go to policy, or I go to administration to see what we can do, if anything, go to the Boards, and we have to work together.
Thank you. Tammy?
Without a doubt, the community and the staff will get a hold of Board members on many occasions, and, and believe it or not, I like that part of the job, in visiting with the community and their concerns, and our staff members and their concerns. And so, I so agree with both David and Ken, that the number one thing you have to do as a Board member is listen, because sometimes that's all they need, is someone just to listen and hear them out, and oftentimes you don't have to take it much further than that. But it is my job as a Board member, once I've listened, to direct that information to the superintendent. And then the superintendent will decide who best amongst his staff can handle that concern, or complaint, or whatever it might be, and, because there is a chain of command set up, and if they, you know, I hand over a concern to the superintendent, he hands it to a director, it might even get down to the principal, might even get down to the classroom teacher where it should have started with, who it should have started with at the beginning, and if that person is not happy with what they are told, or what they find out, if their concern isn't given the respect and/or the attention that they think it needs to have, there's always a way to appeal it right back to the Board, and it will come back to us. But I think, you know, trying to solve the concerns of parents, and the concerns of staff, and the concerns of community members, other than listening and then pointing them in the right direction, is kind of dangerous. I would say that I always encourage people, if you don't get the answer that you're looking for, if you don't get satisfied in how your concern is handled, to get back to me, and then we'll redirect another way. But one thing I always do too at the end is follow up with that person. And I either email them if they email me, or I phone call them back, and I said, "Did your concern get addressed, and are you happy with how it was addressed?" Because I think it's super important to our taxpayers, to our parents, to our staff, that we value their concerns and we take care of them.
Thank you. Brian?
Yeah, and Tammy's right, we do get quite a few different people that, you know, different positions, different people in the community, positions in the district, that reach out to us with concerns, questions, comments, suggestions. And I think, I agree, for me, it's a great opportunity to listen and to understand and gain insight. As somebody who's, who's not a part of the day-to-day operations in the district, I don't, I'm not in the education background, it's helpful for me to get the bigger grasp of the bigger picture. And so, you know, I've gained a lot of insight from people's concerns, questions, suggestions. When we start, this kind of goes back to, a little bit to a previous question, but when we start trying to manage that, then, that is when we start to overstep and become somewhat of a dysfunctional, either Board member or Board. And so, we've got to redirect that problem solving back to the district itself, and sometimes it's a concern of the teacher, and so you try to direct that person back to the teacher, have those conversations. That's where the, that's where the problem can get solved most easily, and we should be about problem solving. So, if, so you, my practice is, I always try to direct that person back to the person who can handle that most easily. As Tammy mentioned, sometimes that doesn't always get the problem solved in the manner that the person would want, and so you can start kind of climbing that chain of command. Usually, if I just hear one concern, it's easy to redirect the person. When you start hearing a trend of concerns, my practice typically is then to mention it to the superintendent or Board President, that this is what I'm hearing out of the community, I'm starting to hear these kinds of trends, so that we're aware of these kind of concerns that are occurring in a group of people, so we're not caught off guard. Maybe there is a problem we need to start looking at. But when I'm communicating that, I'm talking to, like I said, either the Board President or the superintendent to handle it from that, from that position.
Thank you. If elected, what strengths will you bring to the Board, and what weaknesses? David?
Well, I have, it's always fun to talk about oneself, it's kind of like Beowulf did a long time ago. If people don't know you, you do have to talk about yourself, so. I have had a fine education. I love lifelong learning. Throughout my career, I took all kinds of courses and had opportunities to take others through the district and through various colleges and universities. So, I bring all my education and my experience, my experience in the district, my knowledge of the district. I also care very much. Part of my caring, in the previous question, is that I believe that sometimes when people talk to you, it's confidential, and they aren't wanting you to share it necessarily, and you have to get permission to share it if they want it, or find out if they want to take it anywhere. And you have to respect that, so I do that. I have a strong faith. I have been married to the same woman for a long time. We're going on 50 years next year, which is hard to imagine, and we have two fine children, and a couple of grandchildren that are becoming fine. One's five and one's about three months, so that's, that's a little bit about me.
Tammy?
I feel I bring a unique skill set to the Board in that I am the lone educator on the Board. I have 26 years in the classroom, both elementary and secondary level, and I spent 23 of those 26 years working in teacher leadership, working myself all the way up to the highest part of teacher leadership in the state of Missouri, which is President of the Missouri State Teachers Association. We have 44,000 members, so that's a whole nother school, skill set, in working with school districts around the state, working with DESI, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, and working with our General Assembly to form what we want school to look like in the state of Missouri. I often laugh at the thought, oftentimes I've been told, "We don't need an educator on the Board of Education." Doesn't make a lot of sense when every other profession chooses to put people of their profession on the Board of Education, but I feel like the, I keep it real, I keep it, I am the voice for the teacher, I am the voice for the student in the classroom, because I've spent so much time there. So, I think that is probably my greatest strength, is the education experience that I bring. I do have a Master's in Administration, but I chose to go the teacher route instead, so I just kind of run the whole gambit of, of education. And again, I'm the lone educator on the Board right now. I was honored to be named who's who among America's teachers, and so that gives another perspective of the experiences that I've had. Now, my weakness would be staying out of the weeds, because it's really hard when you're the educator and you know, or you think you know, the best way to fix a situation or how to get involved in a situation. And so, it's really hard for me to stay out of the weeds, because I want to jump right in and be that teacher and fix it, or be that administrator and fix it, or be that teacher leader and fix it. And it's been easy with Dr. Van Zyl, because he is such the ultimate professional, that it hasn't been as hard to stay out of the weeds and let him be the superintendent and me be the Board member. But I think that that is probably my greatest weakness. I also bring with my years of education, 11 years in the business world, so I've been in both spectrums. I've been an educator, and I've been in management in the business world, and, you know, while I definitely know the business of education, I also understand how the business world works, and I can see where we can use some of the things from the business world to help us in running our school district, yet I see a school district as a community that kind of just stands alone, because it is unique, it is school, it is not business, it is school.
Thank you. Brian?
Just a couple of seconds here, I, as a fellow Board member and talking to other Board members, your strengths are really, I will say, your strengths are really valued on the Board, and you, because you do bring a perspective that none of the rest of us have, so I'm very appreciative of that. I think for, for me, how do I help, I'll think of the question as, how do I help the Board the most? When I, when I ran three years ago, we were in really an absolute firestorm. The district was, was in a bad way, and we're working, still working through that. One of the things I saw was, there was a big disconnect in this community between our school district and the business community. school district and the business community. I saw some levels of apathy, I saw some levels of absolute disgust, wanting to walk away. And in my mind, for the future of this community, we had to build that back together. We had to marry those two, our public education system and our business community. And as a professional within the business community, I feel like kind of brought that to the board again and caused the professionals in the community to start looking at our school district again and realize the value, what we need out of our public education system. I also looked, often looked at our board meetings and it took the form, it almost seemed to have the form of a reality TV show oftentimes. And I felt it needed a level of professionalism and that's what I really tried to bring, was a more professional demeanor that would create some level of respectability again with our Not at the time, but now, I'm also a parent. And that's something that's been able to be a big part of my life in the last year and a half. And so, I carry even a different perspective now as a parent. And so, creating the kind of school district that I would want my kids to be a part of and graduate from is, it just gives me a little different perspective as well in terms of what do we want to invest in? Finally, I would say that, much like several other board members, maybe all board members, I know the value of education and what it's meant to my life and what it's meant to my family. I know the value of an education from the St. Joe School District too. So there's a pride level for me, what I experienced. Weakness, and do you have a couple of minutes for a weakness? I could go on and on about my strengths. Weakness, time. Time has been a factor for me with the demands of the job. So time is certainly a factor and adjusting to life in the public eye is, there's a learning curve there and it's something I've had to learn to work with because I just, it's tough to, tough to learn that skill set.
Sure. Thank you. Kenneth?
The question was, I'd bring-
If elected, what strengths will you bring to the board and what weaknesses?
I think ironically, what I bring, would bring to the board is some cred, some credibility out there. Because you know, when, the first time I ran for board was 2010. Guess who I ran against? Dan Colgan. So I mean, this has been a nine-year go full circle thing. So, and I don't think it's because I've had 20 years in the banking business and for the last 14 years, I've been self-employed. But what I bring the most is my civic duty. My civic duty, which is what I've always promoted, is what got me in this battle 10 years ago. My civic duty is to question how they're spending my money. And in turn, by me questioning how they're spending my money, I'm asking that question for a whole bunch of other people. And that's why we're begging for money now because we've lost the credibility of how we're going to spend our money, how we spend our money, how the money's been stolen, wasted or however it's gone out the way. I mean, people don't go to jail if something's not wrong. You don't get the worst audit if something's not wrong. So I bring that civic duty that I'm, I'm gonna, from my perspective, from the 71% free lunch and reduced lunch and breakfast in this town, from that perspective, much more than almost anybody on that board at this present time. Like I say, I'm from that side of the tracks in St. Joe. So it's kind of ironic where we've been in this battle this long, all about taxes, all about the sunset, all about things like that, all about the, do you remember, 750 signatures? What a ridiculous illegal scam that was for that many years on this community. That kept so many people's chance from being on the board. That's how they controlled the board is one of the ways, 750 things. So I just bring that credibility that the taxpayer out there has seen me fight for for 10 years. And they know I'm not going to change once I sit on that board. It'd be a privilege and an honor, but the whole thing about it is I'm just one of seven votes. So you don't have to worry about me taking over and becoming superintendent because I'm questioning how they're spending the money. And that's what should have been done for the last 15 years to a far greater degree. And we wouldn't be begging for money now.
Thank you. What qualities, behaviors should a board member exhibit? Tammy?
The ability to keep confidence, most definitely. The ability to be honest, do your homework, ask the tough questions, hold people accountable. Those aren't always fun things, but they're definitely things you need to do if you're a board member. I think Kenneth touched on being connected to our community, being transparent in what you do and say. I think those are important things that a board member needs to have.
Thank you. Brian?
I would say a board member needs to have character. Character to care about people, character to do the right thing, to be honest. Also needs to have a good judge of character when it comes to hiring a superintendent. That was one of the highest criteria that we had, was we needed somebody of high character. So both personal character and then recognizing that in others is very important for a board member. The ability to listen, to be patient, that's something we, that's been a learning process, both as a board member and as a new parent. But learning patience, I was hopeful that this district could turn around much more rapidly than we've been able to. And then you realize, no, this is going to have to be a patient process. And this operations levy is just that step. It's a patient process. It's a small step in a long direction. You know, I, too, I think it's important to learn how to work together as a group. That's been, that's been something the board has learned, has had to learn how to do. You have seven different board members who have sometimes different divergent agendas. And what's more important is the unified direction of the board. And so, sometimes, you know, I may have a different idea of how it should be done and learning how to yield to the majority so that the district can go in a direction is very important. So learning how to get people to work together as a group has been key to reviving this board.
Thank you. Kenneth? What qualities and behaviors should a board member exhibit?
That you have two ears and only one mouth, a great amount of patience, and really to build that camaraderie, that partnership with your fellow board members. And actually, I mean, I appreciate several of the people on the board just by why I know, what I know I could learn. And that's part of the civic duty thing. You gotta raise your hand and get shot down. Raise your hand and get shot down. That's my MO. But the thing is, I'm not going away. And the reason is because I'm paying taxes every day. And I'm a St. Joe School District guy. I mean, I've got my education here and it just is, it, so I have, like anyone, as much concern for this, to get way past where we are. And so, the passing of the levy, but you know, this is just the minuscule steps. I thought by this time too, we'd be doing bigger steps, bigger steps. But we've got to get the best teachers. We're gonna get that billboard out in 29 saying we have the highest paid teachers in the state and look out, our property values will all go up immediately because all these teachers, highly educated ones are going to be moving to our town. And so, then the other, you know, the other two legs of the three-legged stool is top pay. We can demand the most. Early childhood development, every study I've ever seen, early childhood development makes our biggest bang for our buck down the road. If we don't have them educated and ready to go by third grade, we drag them through the system. I mean, a lot more money spent on that, a lot more money spent on teachers' pay. And then finally, a lot more money spent on the big day issue, especially in this town, and that's workforce development. Workforce development with the opportunities that we could expand upon, we could be legendary in this region of the United States by partnering up with the Hilliard Complex, spreading it out, guys like Steve Craig, which I've also had a conversation with about this very thing to blend. When you learn how to be an electrician or be a plumber or be a carpenter, it's a business really. So you don't know how to manage that, to run a business. So again, there's all these opportunities we have here, like not remade communities do. Because we're starting at this level, we've got nothing but blue sky and good things to go. But we've got to think ahead and we've got to give them the money and we're going to start proving we can spend the money. And what does that this time around, guys, which I say, "Let's move on," is that sunset clause. So.
Thank you. David?
Well, first of all, you have to stay awake at meetings. They're not always the most exciting things. People give reports, there are awards, they're exciting to some people, but they may not always be exciting. So you have to stay awake. I think I can do that. You have to do your homework. There is a lot of reading and there's a lot of meetings of behind the scenes. I think you had one this afternoon, maybe. And I think it went three hours or did it go all that? Yeah, it went three hours. Okay. It was scheduled for three hours, it went for three hours. I have a strong skill in questioning and critical thinking, looking at things from different points of view, which I can use. Patience, of course. You have to be in it for the long haul. You have to persist. And you have to be willing to go to Jeff City. And I learned that from my father, who brought to us the current election system and the ballots that we use that are some of the best in the country. Because he had to go to Jefferson City in order to get laws changed. We have to go to Jefferson City to get the amount of money that St. Joseph deserves and also probably to get some laws changed and maybe to get some laws prevented. We need the whole community to be in touch with Representative Shields and Faulkner and so on about some of the things that have been mentioned tonight. They do pay attention. We've heard of people carrying around letters and showing them off and even people who were, you would not expect to be on a certain position because people wrote in and told them what they thought and maybe it was different from what they thought. But if they don't hear from anybody, if they don't hear from their constituents, they just go on to whatever either leadership says or they think on their own. So in order for representatives to be representative, the PTA has to write and call and so do the rest of us. Thank you.
Okay. This is the last question for the evening and it's kind of, with two of you being on the board now and two of you running, obviously for two of you, this is going to have a different answer because the question is, do you have sufficient time and energy to devote to this position? For those of you on the board, you obviously have experienced the time and the energy. You're obviously willing to try to put that forth again. So what time and energy on top of what you've already done, are you ready and willing to give to the district? Brian?
I think it's my turn, yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, great question. You know, I, this, this is obviously more than a hobby and, you know, we devote times to hobbies. This to me is a, is a community purpose. I see, for myself, this is a worthy investment and has been a worthy investment for the last three years and one I will cherish for the rest of my life. I've learned so much. Not just in terms of oversight of a district, but in community involvement and community improvement and service to a community. You know, yes, my job requires a lot of hours as a physician, but the whole purpose of my job is to serve the community. And so, I'm able to do that with my job, but I see our school district as of equal, if not greater, importance for the sake of this community. So it's just an extension of what I want to do in this community and that is serve it and make it a better place to live and a better future place to live for children and families. So for me, yes, it's an investment of time, but it serves a bigger purpose as well. So I don't regret any of the time that it's taken and I look forward to whatever time it's going to take to reach our goal.
Thank you. Kenneth?
The time factor, I really don't see how the doctor does it. I mean, so I can imagine, because I know about how many hours I try to keep up on, how many hours you guys actually spend. No, it's, you're paid by the hour, right? Oh, or is it a salary?
You're talking about our board job?
Yes.
You bet. You pick.
So I kind of look at the time factor right now. I'm in a good position right now in my life. And since it's only three-year terms now, it's a little bit easier to carve out maybe three years of your life as opposed, another way they controlled it was putting somebody on there for six years. I mean, my gosh. So it's a little maybe harder to carve out that time and give it the true honest time you need to give. You get complacent real quick, you know, after maybe the third or fourth year. So the time factor, I would look more as an investment. An investment into my knowledge base and for, that's, when you do time like that, and I serve on several things that it's totally not paid and everybody else in the room usually is getting paid, you've got to look at it as that investment. And you do make contacts when you're there. I mean, you do make that contact. You have to be there at those meetings, however boring they are or how they might be. And I'm not talking about board meetings, but meetings I attend now, but you've got to look at that as the investment in time. This is, I mean, you're the third largest employer in 15 counties. After Hartland and the pig plant, St. Joe School District is the third largest employer. And then there's not a bigger tax base in 15 counties. I mean, you realize that the city, I mean, the school district spends more money than the city, more than either university. It's the biggest, I call it, used to, the biggest feeding trough. A lot of people line up around that, you know, and that adds to a lot of the corruption too because- too, because when you're talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars, being with their paper towels or buying copiers, I mean, that's where you have to have your integrity, too. That's where you have to have the oversight that you were mentioning. And we wouldn't be in this situation that got us here in this negative connotation around St. Joe. So the time is the big factor that you do have to dedicate to this. But I'm taking it as an investment and being a chance to work with a team of six other really professionals, only being one vote, of course, but being able to work with them and garner, take that to my next mission, which is always about one thing, finding out how somebody spends my taxes and spending it. So I don't know what my next venture will be, but if you're spending my taxes, look out.
Thank you. David?
Would you repeat?
Do you have sufficient time and energy to devote to this position?
So we all have lives. I'm retired, but as everybody knows who is retired, there are a lot of places that want you when you're retired and you end up being fairly busy. So I do a lot also around the home. But I've been conditioned over my whole life to live sacrificially and also to do community service. So I, I'll just tell you what I've been doing since the campaign. And today, I spent a good deal of time preparing. I've done a good deal of time, spent a good deal of time looking each day. I try to get on my email and my Facebook page daily and see what's going on there and to post something about every day that relates to the campaign. And so, you know, I'm already preparing to do the job. I have, as I said, some background that helps me hit the ground running. And so if people are looking for a change in the board, I'm a person that can do that and do it fairly easily and am willing to do it, okay? There will be times when I'll have to rearrange certain schedules to be there. I do that. My wife and I tend to try once a week to get schedules together and so she knows where I'm going. And so we'll continue to do that.
Thank you. Tammy?
Being a board member is definitely an investment of time. I do have the time because I'm retired, and so that allows me, other than being a meemaw, to get involved as much as I choose to. I know there have been many days in the last three years, or many weeks in the last three years, that Lori Proustman and I have found ourselves downtown at the offices, sometimes four and five days a week, because you have to be willing to invest the time that it takes. And most definitely, our kids and our staff and our community is worth that time. You know, it's easy for me to invest the time because education is my life's work and it is my passion. And so I will invest the time that's needed. I tell you, in all the work that I've done in almost 30 years of education, being on the Board of Education is the hardest thing I've ever done. Boy, give me back my sixth-grade math class any day, you know. At the same time, I think Brian would agree, it is so rewarding because we see that we can make a difference, even from a governing perspective. So yeah, most definitely, it takes a lot of time, but every minute, every second, every hour of that time is worth it.
We certainly appreciate you all being here this evening to do this forum. We appreciate the time and dedication that you have given and that you hope to give to the district. I can't think of a better thing to give the energy and time to but to benefit our administration, our teachers, and most importantly, the students. Thank you all very much for being here.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.